All right, we'll get started. Thank you all for coming out. If you're here for the Monterey Avenue Skate Park proposal, you're probably...
Uh, sure. You all probably want to... Not the votes, just being... In aisle.
All right. Well, you're... Pretty sure. Uh, don't see... Many of you have been thinking for coming out, uh, seriously? Is a relative focus meeting, uh, the teleporting environmental policy act, does require that projects that have area-wise significance, that we have a public scoping meeting? Um, and the purpose of that is simply to solicit comments from the public on potential environmental effects that a project may have that the lead agency, which in this case the city of Capitola, should consider when you're drafting an environmental impact report. So that's why we brought you all here tonight. We're interested to hear any comments related to environmental impact that this project has. Let's not discuss the merits of the project, uh, whether it should or shouldn't be built, if something you don't like. Again, there's no decision makers. Here tonight, no decisions are made. It's pretty much just informational gathering process or stuff. Um, no, I forgot to mention, my name is Rich Grumman, the city's director of the city of Capitola. And I am joined tonight by Ryan Saff. He's our assistant planner and taking care of the video for tonight's meeting. We will record it and broadcast on television. And then finally Stephanie Strilo, uh, who's a local environmental planner, sequel practitioner. Worked a lot, uh, for many, many years in the San Francisco area, was very happy to ever helping us through this process. And Stephanie and I will handle the presentation. I'll do the first part and then, uh, Stephanie will talk a little bit more detail about what CEQA is and the process. So tonight's agenda, just talked a little bit about the meeting purpose, uh, we'll look at the project location. I assume most of you know, but we'll go through that anyway. Uh, the overview of the proposed project, uh, and then Stephanie will talk a little bit about the EIR process and some of the issues that we anticipate evaluating. And then we'll take oral comments from you. Um, we'll give you three minutes to speak. Uh, anybody who wants to offer their comments or create to do so. Keep in mind, this is not your last opportunity to do so. We do accept written comments until, uh, July 24th, so you can always send those to us later. Or if you say something and think of something later on, you can, you can always follow up with a little... So again, the purpose, environmental issues solely. We're really not looking at why the project should or should not go forward. Um, and then also alternatives. Part of the CEQA processes, we do look at alternatives to the project that have a potential for reducing environmental impacts. Uh, for instance, a very common alternative would be like a reduced project alternative. You can imagine if it was a housing development, maybe instead of twenty new homes, they would look at fifteen or something like that. This project's a little different, but if you have ideas on alternative project types, we'd like to hear that from you as well. Location of the project, as you all know, this is Capitola, and it's outlined here. Uh, it's in Monterey Skate Park on Monterey Avenue, next to the New Brighton School District. Um, you can see the, the park site is labeled, that is city-owned property. Uh, the skate park, the proposed location skate park is highlighted in yellow in between. And then right about the, uh, the edge of the proposed skate park is where the New Brighton Middle School property. So again, taking just a, a look at it from the project, finds the area outlined in red represents the area that would be the skate park, six thousand square feet. Uh, the area that's just immediately adjacent to an outline in green, that would be an area that they would grade to develop the contours for the skateboard, and then they also do some construction staging. So for the purposes of CEQA, we also look at those impacts, uh, because it's necessary to build a proposed project. So again, it's a six thousand square foot approximately skate park proposal. This is a privately initiated request. Many of you know, the city council authorized, uh, private parties to submit an application for their consideration to put this park, uh, or this facility in the park. Uh, the application does require a conditional use permit, a design permit, coastal development permit, and then a right-of-entry permit, uh, from the city council. The park's been designed to accommodate beginner to intermediate level skaters, although the proponents have told me that, you know, from their point of view, if somebody that was more advanced wanted to use it, they certainly could. But that's not how it was designed. It wasn't, um, you know, with larger trick features. Uh, roughly twenty-five skateboarders could be accommodated in there. Uh, it would be fenced. There's no lighting currently proposed, and the hours of operation, uh, would be, at least at this time, running currently with Monterey Park, which is on dusk till dawn. Keep in mind though, that the operation and management of the park ultimately would come at the city council discretion. They would set, you know, what's the maximum number of people, whether or not there's lights, what are the hours of operation, all these things ultimately the city council would decide. So here's just a 3D rendering of what the project would look like. Pretty simple. As you can see, it's got the kind of a bowl design with some, uh, trick features and then surrounded by fencing. And with that, I'll turn it over to Stephanie. She'll talk a little bit more about CEQA, and, uh, I'll probably get up talking later.
Change the slide.
I will.
Just a quick overview, the, um, purpose for the California Environmental Policy Act is to inform decision-makers and the public of potential significant impacts and ways to minimize, avoid, or reduce those impacts. And for the definitions, a significant effect is a physical impact on the environment, so in all my group, social impacts are not considered impacts under CEQA and not considered in the CEQA process. So basically, the first step is preparation of an initial study, which has been done, and a notice of preparation, and the EIR will be prepared. That's been circulated, I believe they're online for anyone to review. Uh, tonight, we're having a public scoping meeting as part of that process, again, to take comments on, uh, what should be in the scope of work for the EIR. And then the draft EIR will be prepared and released for public review and comment. After that, we will take any comments we receive, respond to, and clarify the EIR, and then that will go forward to the planning commission for consideration and appropriate CEQA findings made as necessary. And based on the, uh, results of the initial study, the issues that we found to be potentially significant, that require further review at EIR are aesthetics, um, essentially how the facility would look in the surrounding area, drainage due to the, um, previous surface increase, noise, of course, um, just come up already as noise, traffic and parking, and then there's certain sections that have to be reviewed in every EIR as required on CEQA. Those include unavoidable significant impacts, alternatives, as we mentioned earlier, and cumulative impact. All of those will be in the draft EIR, those exceptions. Um, just a quick overview, um, all the consultants working on this have been hired, and I'm in charge of the city. The city is the lead agency responsible for certifying the EIR. Uh, Richard only introduced me, Stephanie Strilo's the, uh, prior for the EIR. The noise study will be prepared by Illingworth Wadkun, and the traffic and parking study will be prepared by Kinley Horns. Thank you. Keep going with this, sir.
Hi Ken, um, just to mention, you know, public participation, this is one of the junctures where the public does have an opportunity to write comments, participate in the process. As I mentioned before, it's not necessarily your last opportunity. Uh, we, when the environmental impact report is released to the public every forty-five day period, which you can review the document, offer comments, or teach to the city, what all we do by state law, providing responses to whatever comments we receive. Following that, of course, we're in a planning commission hearing. Right now, they would be the authority that would either approve or deny a conditional use permit, design permit, coastal development permit. Um, members of the public of course are welcome to attend those meetings and want people to attend and share their thoughts and feedback. Um, if the project's appealed, which is probably a pretty good likelihood, the city council would ultimately decide those permits, and even without an appeal, they would have to approve a regulatory type permit. So ultimately, this will go to the city council, and then again, will be another opportunity for members of the public to share their views of the project. Um, so for tonight's meeting, uh, we thought we'd give each three minutes if you'd like to speak. Again, you can send in more detailed comments if you'd like in writing. Uh, we do ask that we try to focus on environmental issues. We won't, we won't cut you off or anything, but, uh, for the sake of everybody's time, we keep things kind of focused. And if you hear one of your neighbors say something, um, that you were thinking there's really no need to repeat it, although you're certainly welcome. Um, if you have any written comments you'd like to submit, you can direct those to me. Uh, my contact information's shown on the screen. It's also on the city website, and I've been trying to keep that information updated, so you can go there and see a copy of the plans, the initial study, and as we have more information available, I'll, I'll try to put that on the site for the public as well. Um, tentatively, we're looking at probably starting a public review of the environmental impact report, because early in mid-fall, it'll probably take us a couple of months to draft the documents out. So, uh, probably a couple, two months out for that. Um, so with that, if there's any questions about process or anything, I'd be happy to take those, and then we'll turn it over to you all to offer public comments, just certain about it.
Sorry, I was late. At the beginning, did you state whether or not the private funders are also funding the city's involvement in the EIR process?
The, yes, they are responsible for all city costs associated with processing project.
How high is the fence?
I believe the fence is proposed to be six feet, um, but again, that's something that may change through the, uh, review process.
It's been talked about, the restroom, the need for restroom, is the private funding going to fund that?
That is not part of the proposed project.
Is there going to be a need for, uh, called restroom?
Well, you know, I mean, that's a good question. I think that's something that the city council ultimately, if they approve the project, would have to consider.
Really, really with the park, they said there would be no restroom. And I said the hour is set from sunset, a sunrise to sunset.
Yeah.
So there'd be no heat or lighting.
The noise proposed term.
Well, it, it says that that would be up in the city.
The city council ultimately, I mean, they're the decision-making body for nearly anything that happens in the city, so they do have legislative authority to make those types of decisions.
You know, what more broken promise to the big book, I think.
Will these slides be on the website?
Yeah, I can post this on Wednesday, sure.
We signed up this sheet, was there a point to sign it up on the sheet?
Uh, that was just for if you want to get public comment, do we have your name, if we had any follow-up, if we couldn't understand the video or something, just to attribute it to you, but, um, you don't have to sign up if you don't want to speak.
What if you do, that's...
We, we would like to do it. I'm not going to treat you down.
So those components that you're talking about, the bathroom, the chains and lighting, wouldn't that need to be required to be part of the proposed project description in the EIR?
If it were part of the proposal, but it's not, so we only evaluate proposed project.
So in future, if the restroom is going to have to be added, are we going to review that?
There would need to be some type of CEQA review for a restroom. So with that, I'll open up to you all. I do understand there might be some members of the audience that have to leave relatively early, uh, if you're one of those folks that invites you to speak first. Uh, otherwise, whoever wants to come up, the microphone is on. It is a bit awkward, I apologize. It's not best suited for talking to an audience like this, but, uh, whatever makes you comfortable. How about it?
I'm Robin Gaither, and I live at 223 Unipro Court, and my back fence backs up to the baseball area. And, and, uh, one of the concerns I have, all of the concerns are being addressed with the E, EIR, um, particularly on the aesthetics. I'm wondering if it's possible to mark out the actual dimensions of the proposed skateboard facility, so when you walk around there, you get a sense of exactly where it's going to be, as well as tagging any trees that would need to be removed. I know there was some discussion around whether or not that would need to happen, so that you can get sort of a visual, and also with the height proposal for the fence, that that be included in that, um, marking off of the perimeter. It's a little difficult to kind of walk around in your head with what's up here and out on the field. Um, I'm particularly going to be interested in the noise report, because there's this, uh, a fair amount of noise coming with the baseball participation and the other activities that are there, um, that, um, neighbors, um, deal with, but they're sporadic, uh, noise, not constant kind of cycling of noise. Um, and I think the marking off will help also know how much of this might impinge on the walking trail around the park, as well as getting from the baseball diamond area over into any of the other usage areas on that, that, um, property. So if they could manage to mark that off, that would be great for us to take a look at.
Thank you.
My name's Stephanie Tetter, and I live at 222 Unipro Court, and I'm going to read this, because I'm not as good at speaking off the cuff as Robin is. Um, a friend of mine came to visit, and she's an active bird watcher, and we were walking through the park, and I pointed out to her where the skate park was going to be. And she pointed out that the noise and activity of a six thousand square foot skate park is incompatible with one of the less visible, but no less important uses of the park, and that's by birders and birds. Um, if you just give a quick look at online resources such as eBird or All About Birds, you can see that there are a wide variety of birds having been documented as resident in Monterey Park. And while this project might not have a substantial adverse effect on any special status species, such as is spelled out on the CEQA initial study checklist, item four A, um, there are lots of birds in the park that have been observed, and I think it's important to maintain an environment that supports a diverse range of birds, and in fact, the Capitola general plan calls for preserving Capitola's natural resources, which would include birds. The construction of a concrete skate park surrounded by a fence, along with the suggested possibility of who knows how many trees being removed, would have significant negative impact on both the birds and the birders who use the park. This would degrade the existing visual character of the park, which is item one C on the checklist, and would also result in adverse effects on the environment and the physical deterioration of the facility, which are items fifteen A and B on the initial study checklist. Thank you.
I have notes too. I'm Terry Tetter. I live at 222 Unipro Court, and I think this, my, my, uh, my argument should be directed to Stephanie or whoever marked up the CEQA checklist. Um, I'm referring to the CEQA checklist, section twelve, item D reads as follows: "A substantial temporary or periodic increase in ambient noise levels in the project vicinity above levels existing without, without the project. This item was evaluated as less than significant impact." I have to disagree with that. On Saturday, I went to the street fair, um, the Pleasure Point Street Fair, and spent some time at the skateboard contest. And I can tell you that the loud amplified PA system and music would definitely constitute a quote "substantial increase in ambient noise levels beyond those existing without the project," because without the project, there wouldn't be any amplified noise or skateboard contests or amplified music. People in the skateboard business sponsor teams, and teams compete in contests, one feature of which is amplified sound. If this additional skate park, addition to the one that's already being built, uh, it's reasonable to assume these people will come to the city council for permits to blast our quiet neighborhood with amplified sound. Um, from what I've seen of city council actions since November eleventh, I doubt that three of the members would be able to say no to anybody who want to do anything skateboard related in the park. So I think if you would investigate, uh, the, the noise, not of the skateboards, but go to a skateboard contest and listen to the ampl, the amplified sound. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Darren Harris, and I live on Orchid Avenue. My, I'm just across the fence from the proposed skate park area. I'd like to emphasize what Stephanie said, especially about the birds. I've seen a red, a red-tailed hawk in the park there, and, uh, any increase in noise would adversely affect their habits. And, uh, no mitigation is, uh, proposed or even possible to protect the nearby homes from the unnatural sounds of skating and possibly amplified sound, as well as you've mentioned. Children are especially sensitive to the negative impacts of noise pollution. In addition, like all residential neighborhoods, this neighborhood includes people who would be adversely affected by the excess noise due to their work schedules, who have to sleep during the day. I'm one of them. And, uh, that might make sleeping impossible, I, so I can't support this part.
My name's Dan Benvenuti. I live at 105 Wesley. I'm not very close to the park, but I'm familiar with the park. Take my grandson out there and, uh, practice baseball quite frequently. And I know during the winter months, that that whole lower section of both baseball diamonds on either side of the proposed skateboard park is a marsh, okay? So you've got some definite drainage problems there. Removing the area that is now drainage, that's going to be the skateboard park, is going to not allow the existing area to drain, so you're going to amplify that problem. Now, I understand you're probably just going to take the existing drainage from the skateboard park and run it down the storm drain system, but that doesn't address the surrounding area. And also, if you've got twenty-five members there skateboarding, I don't think there's probably twenty-five parking spaces in that parking lot. So if the other people that want to come and use the park for baseball, where are they going to park? So I think you've got a real issue with parking there. Okay? That's all I have to say.
Hi, I'm Chris Bowman. My back fence goes to the park. I live on Orchid. When the skateboard company made this development proposal, it was presented with so many infuriating false premises about potential impact. I will leave out most of them, but I would like to at least address four. One, the description of Monterey Avenue as a thoroughfare is false. It is a through street, but it's a two-lane street through a quiet neighborhood. It gets very backed up for a number of minutes at school pickup and drop-off, and when church gets out, because it is a street not meant for heavy traffic, nor is the neighborhood. Two, the notion that skateboards create as much noise as a truck driving by has already been dispelled, but I would like to point out, we don't have many trucks on Monterey Avenue, and certainly not all day in a constant stream like the noise a skate park generates. A truck drives by and it's gone. A skate park just keeps going and going, and it sounds like a construction zone. Big rigs, where the noise comparison comes from, are not using Monterey Avenue. Three, the notion that this park would be just for small kids is false. The original two thousand square foot design without rails and other features was just for small kids. Four, the notion that my home is already negatively impacted because I live next to the park is false. Living next to the park has been awesome. I've lived there for twenty-four years. We raised our kids there with a half-pipe in our backyard that my husband and son built, and skaters in my backyard. The latest name we've been called is cranky. I'm not cranky about the park or the noise. I love the park. I love the liveliness. But let's face it, not even the skate park designer wants to live at a public skate park. If this was a proposal to put in swings, a slide, a climbing structure, and picnic tables, I wouldn't be here tonight. I'd be home on my elliptical where I should be. But my biggest concern is something I really, really want to be looked at. This is a very unique situation now, because of the proximity of this skate park to the other skate park. It's now creating a mega skate park situation that has never been seen before. I believe this would be a huge draw to skaters from far and wide. Why would it not be? There is nothing to compare this to. And when we compare skate parks, we have to recognize that the problem with the location using Monterey Park as this development is the closeness of the houses to the park. Even the houses across the street are atypically close, and Monterey Park itself is very small. Sorry. Oops. So quiet street, small park, close houses, large skate park design, and a mega skate park situation. This has the potential to have a huge impact on our neighborhood. Thanks.
Hi, I'm David Stahl. Live pretty close to the proposed site that they're building, and, um, a lot of points I have, have already been mentioned, but, but, um, what I envision is parents dropping kids off at the park, so that increases the traffic. And when the kids aren't at the park, I've seen them, they've been doing it, um, for a long time as, uh, used paraffin on, uh, curbs in front of the house, and that's to make the boards slide. They've been doing that, they did it just today a couple of times. I think they'll be doing it then too. It, it, all that is loud, plus, um, the whole vision of the park, what the park proposes and what it is, is going to be loud anyway, because that's what it is. It's loud more than anything. And, and I think it's going to be, um, an area for babysitting. Drop the kids off and I'll come back and get you later.
I live, uh, on Orchid.
Could anyone please speak into the microphone? It's very hard to hear. Thank you.
Testing.
What's that?
I'm Norm Lane. Uh, I live on Orchid. Uh, very close. And, um, I just, I want to reiterate the noise situation. Everybody's mentioned it, but me too. And I believe there's an exotic surface of, in the park, planned, which will be a really loud thing that nobody's really considered, I think. Um, that's all.
I did put a wireless microphone up here too, if somebody prefers to...
Should I give it, should I give it a try? Maybe the first one? Test one, two. There we go. My name is Richard Lippi. I live on Monterey Avenue, and, um, I'd, I'd like to, um, introduce some, some ideas, I think, that haven't been discussed before. Um, I noticed, uh, that the, uh, construction hours are Monday through Friday, seven-thirty AM to nine PM. I'd like to have staff reconsider that. That, that's quite a long time. Um, that doesn't, doesn't give the neighbors much chance to, to rest. And, um, I don't see anything about, uh, referencing construction noise, uh, air pollution, or ground contaminants. Um, and I happen to know that, um, uh, you know, in addition to the regular noise, sometimes they bring radios out to the construction site, and I'd like to make sure that, uh, that we don't have radios out there. And, um, if they're going to be using portable generators, and they're going to have the generator running, uh, eight hours a day, uh, I'd, I'd like to see if they would use a clean school, um, generator. And, um, there's going to be oil and hydraulic leaks, uh, which will be, you know, result in ground contamination, and I don't know how you're going to get around that. But the other thing is, you show a quarter acre site with, um, uh, the actual construction and laid-out area, but you don't show... laid-out area, but you don't show ingress and egress. And that's part of the site. How are the trucks going to get in? How are they going to turn around and how are they going to, and how are they going to go out? So I'd like to consider that. Also, I'd like to consider, when considering the noise, consider the echo factor. The echo factor off of the existing houses, the buildings and the fences. I happen to know from a personal experience that from my location in the caretaker's home, that I can hear skateboarders out at the Pacific Performing Arts Center, which is about 700 feet away because of the echo. I can hear the echo. So there's more than just noise generated. There's also the repeat echo factor. Also, once the facility is in place, instead of a lawnmower traveling at 12 miles an hour for about six minutes to do that lawn, we're going to have leaf blowers and weed eaters substituted to maintain that facility. And leaf blowers and weed eaters can be very annoying, especially if they're throttled. If they go, "Ah, ah, ah." That's very annoying. And it takes a lot longer to do leaf blowers and weed eaters than it does to run the mower, which runs at a constant throttle. I also think that there's going to be a lot of lawn abuse outside of the fenced area because there's no spectator seating inside the park. And I think that we're going to find that there's going to be a lot of abuse of the lawn. And so I think that should be taken into consideration. I guess the last thing I want to mention is that there will be organized events because the boardroom and the principal of New Brighton have talked about it. And we should also look into the supervision of children under 12 years old because that's what the state mandates. Thank you.
My name's Don Sanders. I live at 230 Juniper Court on the corner there. My son lives across the street, backed up to the park. He can't be here tonight because he's out of town on business. But the only comment I have, after listening to what everybody said here, is the spawn, one of the premier skateboard park builders, designers in state of California, he has a little article there on how to design, go about designing a skateboard park. One of the first things is, it should not be in a residential district unless the nearest house is further than 600 feet from the park. I don't think you qualify under his. So you might check into what he says. It says he's designed parks all over the state of California and he's been through several lawsuits. He hasn't had any lawsuits against him, but other people have been, had lawsuits.
Well, I'm Lisa Steingrube and I live at 701 Monterey Avenue. And obviously, I'm one of those cranky old people who does not want a noisy skate park across the street. I don't mind. We never objected to a small skate park. A 2,000 to 3,000 square foot park was fine with us. But this is a 6,000 square foot with all the features of the skate park for all levels, including advanced skaters. And also, I want to point out, several of the editorials have been saying that we're like people that buy a house near an airport and complain about airport noise. That's not true. That was an empty field when we bought the house. And it is not knowingly that we go in there and decide we don't want the noise of skateboarders and then buy a house next to it. Also, I teach summer school and I have a couple of kids that skate to Gabrielle. And I was talking to them about it and they said, "Oh, you don't want a skate park near your house. Do you know how noisy that is, Mrs. Steingrube?" And I'm like, "Yeah." I said, and he said, "It's not only that noise, it's that people hook their iPods up and bring speakers and they blast those." And one of them lives near Jose Park and he said, "Tell you the truth, it drives me crazy out my bedroom window to listen to that clickety-clack." And, you know, and he's a skater. And I know Orchid Court, I think we measured it's less than 100 feet. I think it's approximately 70 feet from the skate park. And for the bottom line, I think that skate park of that size doesn't belong in our neighbor, in any neighborhood. Monterey Avenue is already a busy street with limited parking. We don't need more traffic, noise and congestion. And it's the last green space. And why does a city of 1.67 square miles need two skate parks?
Hello, Dan Steingrube, 701 Monterey Avenue. Another cranky old man. My biggest concern is noise. As an example, on a Sunday morning, I can be in my backyard having a cup of coffee and I can hear a single skateboard coming from the church. And that's something that needs to be addressed in our, in that report. Is that kind of noise that's going to be created, not just at the park, but in the surrounding area coming into that park? And I guess it comes from echoing between the homes in the area and that sort of thing. But it, I can't imagine if there's going to be dozens of skateboards all day long coming up Monterey, not only to that park, proposed park, but they're going to be heading to the new one that's on McGregor. Like they said, this is going to be a regional skateboard town. And my second concern, and I'm sure everybody in here is aware of it, is traffic. And what are we going to do when, it's not when, but, or it's not if, it's when they put a bike lane on the park side of Monterey Avenue is going to eliminate half the parking on Monterey Avenue. It'll be gone. So where are all these people going to park their cars when they are going to be bringing kids there to skate? And of course, an alternative, something smaller with less features needs to be considered this site for small children. We already have a great new facility for the older children. Thank you.
My name's Carla Villarreal. I live at 706 the Court, Orchid Avenue. I think I'm pretty close. I hear different numbers, 150 feet, 102 feet. So my big concern is noise for my home, just as my neighbors, but also for the school, which is really close. And the constant of skateboarding. I'm all about skateboarding, but not so close to homes, not so close to a school.
I have a different issue, I think, to talk about. And what I brought today, I was hoping that we're going to have a camera here. Maybe you can see it. But I just went across the street to the park and I found a little baby bird that had died. And, you know, according to, and it was, it was just at the very back, underneath the scrub, at the very back of the park. And one of the things that I'm concerned about is that we're going to be taking away the safe factor for that park. And that we're going to have our wildlife, whether it's a raccoon or a stinky skunk, but we're going to, we're going to drive the birds away. And I feel that this is something that I personally enjoy and I take my kids over, that I'm babysitting, over there all the time because we watch the swallows going back and forth and we go and talk about the, you know, how they build their nests that way. And to me, that's a delight and it's a treasure that we have. But if we, if we find dead birds around and if we don't provide the canopy for the trees and we put up fences and we have this noise that's out there that is going to, the birds won't come with the clickety-clack and the skateboard noise. And I think that it's not fair to the environment of the animals and people that are right there already in that park. It used to be part of a swamp. And, I mean, maybe it should have been left part of a swamp, you know? I mean, I think it's in a, personally, I think it is an improvement. But one of the things too, is that, you know, my questions, and I haven't seen the environmental impact statement. So I don't know if you in fact have listed all the birds that are there because that's usually part of an environmental impact statement. I've written them before.
So we have not drafted the EIR yet. This meeting is kind of a kickoff to it so we can get public comments before we get to work and put pen and paper and start writing.
Okay. So what I'm asking you would be is that I would like you to designate what birds are in the area. As far as I remember, there is a peregrine falcon that was, that had been sighted in our neighborhood in Cliffwood Heights. And so that's something that is a preserved bird, is a bird that is very rarely seen. We are designated spot as far as being a bird site. I'm not sure what the terminology is. I forgot to write it down. And then just that beautiful music as far as when the birds do sing and they do have a safe place to congregate. And just some of the birds that are out there, we have swallows, the toes, the titmice, the pigeons, the doves, and they all need a place to live. So I guess my question, my final question is, is that I would like to see in the EIR report, the listing of all the birds that have been sighted in that area.
Thank you.
I think I shouldn't look at this. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kailash Mozumder. I'm a homeowner here in Capitola. I see a lot of my neighbors here and I don't think it's fair to call my neighbors cranky neighbors. They're my neighbors and I know them. I would just say they're very concerned neighbors. I'm a professional wildlife biologist and I do a lot of these types of studies for work. So after reading the initial study, I had a few comments that I wanted to make based on a few of the topics. So first, under alternatives, and I think I may have missed this, but as part of this process, the lead agency must identify and evaluate other alternatives that meet the same objectives and purpose of the proposed project. And I think the EIR needs to explicitly describe the detailed objectives and purposes of the project. And I think to generate ideas for the alternatives, I would recommend that we solicit input from the community to ask ourselves questions that could better help and inform what those alternatives could be. Under biological resources, I think additional analysis should be provided to support the existing statement that the IS states that the project will have no effect on biological resources. The vegetation in and around Monterey Park provide nesting, foraging and annual habitat for numerous species of birds, mammals and amphibians. In order to determine a no effect, the project will need to conduct bird surveys to comply with the Marjorie Bird Treaty Act to demonstrate that the proposed project does not impact nesting for this numerous species of birds and raptors that use the park. And, let's see. Okay. Then under traffic and transportation, the IS states that the proposed project would not result in significant trip generation. At the last meeting, the majority of the parents made reference to driving their children to the skate park. So I think that in order for us to make an informed decision on that, the issue of trip generation, a study should be done at McGregor Park to see what level of traffic use happens there in order for moving forward with this project. And then finally, under public service and recreation, the IS states that there would be no increase in demand for public services. I think to support this statement, the EIR, the other communities in the area with skate parks should be contacted to see and better understand what level of additional burden is added to their police and emergency services. Thank you.
My name's Mike Sanders. I live at 231 Juniper Court. And I talked about this a while back. I don't think you were here, but the demographic in our neighborhood, people that moved there have lived there for years. I've lived there for 28 years, raised three kids, have two grandkids. On the cul-de-sac that I live, which is Juniper Court, there's one young family and then for the most part, most of the people are either retired or working towards retirement. And I think it's that way of a lot of other areas around there. Because I go around the whole neighborhood, I see, I see very few kids, but I see a lot of people around my age taking care of their house. So it doesn't really support having a skateboard park, especially a large one, that close to all of us. So that's all I'm saying.
Anyone else would like to share their thoughts to me?
Hi, I'm Helen Bryce. Skate parks are noisy. People and wildlife are negatively impacted by noise regarding 12A, 12C and 12D and 14B and 15B. This is not a skate park for little kids. It has multiple noisy features. Once the skate park is in place, there will be no way to regulate the ages using the park, the size of the groups or the types of skateboards used. This means large groups of older youths can congregate, creating a lot of noise. Many skaters prefer loud skateboards for tricks and they make exciting sounds. These skateboards will then be used on the sidewalks, streets and parking lots around Monterey Park, generating yet more noise. Regarding 3B, 3D and 9F, construction at the proposed site can cause soil contaminants, including arsenic and lead, to become airborne. Disturbing the soil can also cause those contaminants to further migrate into the water table, which is very high in Monterey Park. Arsenic and lead have been discovered at a construction location nearby, i.e. McGregor. Therefore, these are not unforeseen issues. How will this proposed development protect our families from these contaminants? Our water table is precious and so is our air quality. 1A, 1B, 1C, 4E, I'm running out of numbers. There's so many of them. The large eucalyptus trees in Monterey Park are the biggest trees in the neighborhood. They are part of the beloved scenscape of the neighborhood. I am concerned that the proposed construction will damage the trees since the proposal places the skate park right at the base of the trees and on their roots. The initial sequel study also mentions the possibility of the city removing the trees. This is inconsistent with the direction provided by the city council when a proposed skate park of 9,000 square feet was rejected by the city. The trees need to be preserved because they are large and they are an important part of our urban forest, city canopy, and they provide important shade and cooling and scenic enjoyment. These large trees are required by red-tailed hawks and red-shouldered hawks and peregrine falcons, which frequent Monterey Park for their hunting. These birds are an important part of Capitola's ecosystem. They need to perch up high in the trees in order to hunt. Capitola's general plan states we must preserve our natural resources. Of course, again, noise is disruptive to all wildlife. Monterey Park has a variety of wildlife that will not be able to adapt to the increased noise levels. Thank you.
Hey, Rich, thanks for taking your time out and do this little thing. Just mainly our comments. So what sort of EIR was prepared for the McGregor site in respect to like the birds, the construction runoff and all the contaminants that are being discussed? Just something food for thought to think about. Thank you. Sorry about that. John Martorela. Kind of like my comment was, what sort of environmental impact report was done at McGregor? The temporary location in respect to like the habitat and also construction runoff that's been asked here earlier? Just something to think about when these questions are raised. Thank you.
Yeah, we looked at it. It qualified for a sequel exemption. Oh, yeah, yeah. That's for that project.
Um, hi. I think we're out here. It's too late. No. But now they, now they kind of come down. So now they have to stop.
Yeah, they're working on some contaminants.
They're trying to study it. Right.
Well, that's oftentimes.
Wait for Rich to finish answering some questions.
And that actually was the site or construction.
So you're, you're just, everybody, you're just expressing your opinion. So just make sure you.
Everybody, you're just expressing your opinion. So just make sure you're talking to the microphone.
What is the temporary location?
Not temporary.
Anyhow, I think the purpose of the meeting was to propose questions on the EIR, correct? And then the website does have everything, minutes from previous meetings regarding the park. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ellen Water. Hi, I'm Ellen Water and I live on Unifero Court, which borders the park. And I guess there was a recent article in the paper that said we all bought like million-dollar homes and and now we're complaining that we live next to a park. Well, most of us, me, for example, paid around $100,000 for our house. And there was no park there. And we did have input with the city when they decided to make a park. And we all wanted just an open green space. Sorry, I ran down here. And there were people on the council at the time who were into softball. So they said, oh, we can't just have all this space and nothing cool to do. So they put a softball park in. But they promised there would be no adult leagues, so it would be quiet. It would just be, you know, occasional catch games. And then they built the backstop so it couldn't be used for hardball. It's not for hardball because people were worried, you know, the balls are going to hit the street and they're going to hit the parking lot and they're going to be in neighbors' houses. So no hardball, no adult leagues. Well, a few years down the line, well, we ought to have adult leagues, you know, no problem. It won't bother anybody. Well, so everybody who lives on Unifero Court got to listen to adult leagues play a lot. And it was noisy. So now, as I drove by, they were playing hardball. I don't know if it's a full game, but it's a practice. And those hardballs, that backstop and that, where that's located, doesn't keep those balls from going in the street. So I think there was a thing on a website where they had a, like, competition with speakers and everything. Now, from the history of how this has gone, I know what's going to happen. They're going to put that thing in and then they're going to say, well, we got to use it. We got to have competitions there. We have to let the kids enjoy it. So then we're going to have loudspeakers and we're going to have activities like on West Cliff Drive during the surfing competitions. And it does not belong in a residential neighborhood that close to houses where people have to listen from nine in the morning to nine at night. And skate parks are noisy. They're very, very noisy. And all of the communities that have recently had these put in by the marketing people and the skateboard people that have had this new trend to like build these parks and promote their industry, the residents are complaining. They're like, it's noisy. And they're all saying, oh, you should have had your input before. But the point is, the really close residents who live right next to it, they did have input, but they were ignored. They were said, they were called hysterical and, you know, afraid and stupid. And we're not cranky. You know, all the names that they call us because we don't want this right next to our homes. And the people who think this is such a great idea, you don't want it right next to your house either. And, you know, the, all the councilmen who live next door to the people who want this, they don't want it down their street. So why is it okay to put it at Monterey Park? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Can I just, I'll just go really quickly. So John D. Gums, July 23, 2013, in Santa Cruz Sentinel.
Hi, Marie Mardarella. I don't have my laptop. I have a phone, so it's hard to pull all this up. But I just want to point you to the July 23, 2013, Santa Cruz Sentinel article that John D. Gums provided was a summary of a meeting from the city council that is titled, "McGregor Drive Lot Ided For Temporary Skate Park, Dog Park, and Bike Track." And if you further discuss with the council, they will back that up. It is a temporary location. Thank you.
All right, last call for comments on the project. And Darmon will wrap it up.
Rich, I've spoken to a number of people on city staff who have told me that the McGregor Skate Park is not a temporary facility, that the city has invested $100,000 in that. Are, can you clarify that issue for us?
Although off topic, it's my recollection it was approved as a temporary park.
How do you pay $100,000 to have somebody temporary?
Well, you use it for a certain, a certain period of time and then the state commission.
Oh, so we have until July 24th, 5 o'clock, July 24th, to make submissions, right?
Correct.
And then that's when, that's when the poll, I mean, I imagine there's work that's going to, that can start right now. But by July 24th, you'll have all of our, now how will we know if our concerns are addressable or will be addressed? How would we know that?
Well, by reviewing the draft document, we will include copies of any written comments that we have as an appendix into the EIR. And
Say that again, huh?
We will include copies of all written comments that we received as an appendix.
You will? Oh, okay. It'll be in the appendix. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Now, what I can tell you here, though, is to the extent that we receive comments that are not SEQUO-related, land use compatibility issues, community character type things, do we need a second park? We won't respond to those. We'll probably say something like, comment noted, it's not a SEQUO issue. So you see that? Don't be offended, but we are kind of within a scope of review for the SEQUO process. It's California Environmental Quality Act. It's a state legislation that requires agencies to review the environmental impacts of a project prior to approving it and to disclose that information to public decision makers.
I love this part, but as far as noise, who does all the babysitting? A 30-year-old could be a new person starting to learn how to skate. So who's babysitting? Who's making sure the noise is at the level it's supposed to be? The DBAs are all correct or all the time? Who does all that babysitting? Or do you keep calling 911? How's that happen?
So, I mean, the way we'll look at it is there'll be, we'll evaluate noise based upon other skate parks that are out there, get some kind of idea of what are the types of noise generation these things create. And then that'll be the basis for it. In terms of monitoring it, you know, I heard a speaker say something about bringing radios. That'd be more of an enforcement issue. If somebody's out there blasting a stereo or something, you know, we'd have to respond, as we heard about something like that. But there's no proposal that somebody cited there full-time security to watch the, watch the park.
And, and so what are the ages? From what to what?
There's, there's no real set age. It's, it was kind of generalized as anywhere from beginner to intermediate level. But if somebody was more advanced, wanted to put someone out there, I suppose they could.
So a 30-year-old could be at the beginning.
Yeah, theoretically.
It's open to the public, was there?
Yeah.
It's open to the public, just like the park is.
Is it totally a done deal that they're going to put this skate park?
No, not at all. The city council, the planning commission would have to approve permits. Ultimately, the city council has to approve a right-of-entry permit. So until they drop the gap and approve it, it's not a done deal. We're going through the review process.
What happened to soccer fields?
The J Street?
You know, the ones that are on, at Monterey Park?
Oh, the, the baseball field?
No, there's, people play soccer there.
It's a non-conformal mod. Steve Jesper just referenced this year already.
I'm just thinking back. Pam said he's monitoring the noise. Who's going to count 25 skateboarders and kick out the 26 point?
You know, that's kind of a management and operation issue.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Who's going to manage it?
Yeah, I mean, there's always the monitoring issues and some that we'll have to grapple with through the entitlement process. City council ultimately has said, should they approve it? How do we manage, operate, and monitor? But, you know, there are challenges, for sure.
And one other question related to that. Who hires people? Who hires the people to do the noise study, to do the traffic study? You did, did you get bids from people? Or how did you, who scuttled on this funding?
The project proponents are funding all the city staff, prime and the consultants to prepare.
I know, are they paying?
No, we didn't.
On recommendations of that? Or do you?
No. No, in Stephanie's case, she's somebody that's done probably more SEQUO work in Santa Cruz County than anyone else. It's important to me to get somebody that's local, knowledgeable at Capitola, worked with her in the past, and I'm satisfied. So that was, that was the rationale I used for selecting Stephanie.
It is objective. I mean, that's the goal. I would pay.
Yeah, I mean, my role is to be an objective and partial evaluator. I'm not a decision-maker. I give advice and recommendations to the city council and planning commission. I'm not an advocate or against the project. I'm just trying to give a neutral push and offer the best information I can to public decision makers.
Are there any other skate parks in Santa Cruz County that are in residential neighborhoods like this? I mean, I know the Winding Scotts Valley is not.
Probably not the best person to ask that question.
What about this family? It seems like you're, you know, what's going on in the skateboard world? What family? I don't know who they are.
And your question is regarding to the environmental impact report?
Where are the skateboards?
The skate park? Oh, the neighborhood ones? There's Jose, there's Felt Street, there's Derby. And then Scotts Valley, obviously, is kind of multi-use up there mostly. There's a library, there's the finger center, there's some homes on the other side of the park that that kind of butts up to where the skate park and the dog park are. But there are definitely more in town than the other three are.
So are all those parks as close as the close one here?
The nearest home to Derby Park is less than 50 feet. I want to say, in fact, it's in the presentation packet, actually. I want to say it was around 38, 38 feet, I think, was the nearest home there. That's, that's a 6,000 square foot park and it's kind of in the middle. And there's homes, there's, there's two different ways to get in there. One's kind of a dead-end little street and there's a path that goes to it. And there's homes on both sides. And then there's also a school kind of on the other side of the park itself.
Isn't that the same thing to Felt Street? Like, there's houses just across the street?
And Felt Street is, yeah, Felt Street is definitely much more mixed. There is a school. I think there's a sheriff's, some sort of sheriff operating building there. There are homes. And that, and that's about five thousand square. It's a little smaller, but it's not teeny tiny. And that also is a bit more of a, I mean, it's a little mixed, but there's definitely homes across the street. And then, what was the other one? And then Jose. And I used to actually pay Herman Chupel to Jose's side and things like that for a while. But there's even another summit multi-use park with a skate park in the middle. And then there's kind of a danger townhome, mostly. But again, the nearest is over there. But surround the park itself.
So if we were to go to those neighborhoods and ask those, ask go to house to house, and could we get bridge statements for them? How do they feel about having that skate park so close?
We actually have several letters from the neighbors next to Derby that are in our packet as well from February that wrote some very supportive letters that are all, they're actually just in right at the end of the street that you walk past their homes to get to the park.
We could maybe do a, possibly, just to get a more objective, current business point of view.
Yeah, I mean, it was February this year, but
Hey, Rich, quick, like, with any project, there's a process you go through, right? That you're going to build a home or, or construct a bridge or remodel something. You've got the environmental stuff to study and you get public input and whatnot. By having a public-scoping meeting, that's actually inviting folks to come in there and address valid concerns, correct?
Right.
Okay. So in, in terms like valid concerns, you want stuff like in writing to like support what's been talked about this evening, as far as like, you know, the habitat, maybe runoff from construction work if the project does, you know, perceive traffic and noise and all that, which is being done, you know, Stephanie up here. So it, in comparing, I guess, apples to oranges to the McGregor site, you know, I want to reiterate that what was done on that, that's, could be used for over here. Like the bird study, the runoff study, traffic. Another one, too, is like, how are you going to get to McGregor Park? You know, it's, you're crossing, we know, I'm not going to go into soap opera about the whole thing, but there's no green lanes going for a bike. There's no walk path, nothing. So what, as part of the EIR on that, if there wasn't one done, or if they had a name of declaration, why was there, why wasn't there one done for McGregor? You know, why wasn't everybody here talking about the birds or talking about the noise and all that in comparison to this project?
When I asked Mayor Norton about that, he said the park was going in. There wasn't, there wasn't going to be any input. To answer your question.
On the McGregor site?
On the McGregor site. And that's when it was supposedly totally funded by private interest. But now it's over $250,000 out of the city budget that's going to go in there.
There's not getting done. This is
Lots of controversy.
Sorry about McGregor.
All right, keep focused.
Go ahead. There's a question down there.
One of the things that I was hoping that we could, right from the city, I'm sure that you have a decibel breaker. They're expensive. I looked into buying one. I can't afford it. Is that if we could take that and, and do you have, first of all, do you have one?
We have one. It's an old model. I question its reliability. The noise professionally we have will have a state-of-the-art modern, high-tech, yeah, that will use, so.
Well, then how, do we have access to state-of-the-art contraption?
I couldn't admit somebody else's high-priced question.
Oh, in the beginning, this, this nice lady made an introduction, died up there with a Okay. Stephanie, you said there were two areas that we, that we weren't going to be discussing. It was blank and, blank and social. Okay. So what's the definition of social, the area? What constitutes social? That you're not going, that you're not going to be considering? When you say social, what do you mean?
Something like, you know, the wrong kind of people are going to hang out in the area. This is going to draw.
Okay. Well, let me ask, actually, let me ask you this. This is what I'm worried about. The, some, there are a lot of neighbors that are concerned about possible negative effects on the schoolchildren, maybe a distraction. Is that considered a social factor?
It's something that I think the city council, you know, they look at the whole spectrum of issues, you know, whether it's social, economic, community character, everything. SEQUO is much more narrow, so we're going to focus on environmental issues there. But certainly
Probably more quantitative rather than subjective, right?
Well, it goes both ways. You know, there's qualitative and quantitative things that we look at with SEQUO. But the point being that when the city council and the planning commission weigh their decision, they're going to look at everything. And they will take those, those concerns into consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Really appreciate your time. And we'll be communicating again as things move forward.